Okay. Good evening. Before we call the meeting to order, I would like to read the city's land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the city of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabriolano Tongva and the Gabriolano Kish peoples. I'm calling the December 1st, 2025 City Council Meeting to Order. It is 6:05 PM. We have some very special guests with us tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. May we please have Isla Neal, Margot Rich, Easton Noble, Ora Pierce, and Alessandra Solano join us in the front of the room to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you all so much. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Hang.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Meister.
Here.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Here.
Mayor Byers.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Terrific. I'll turn it over to our city attorney for a report of our closed session.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The City Council convened a special closed session this evening at the beginning at 5:00 PM. There were no members of the public here to speak on the closed session agenda. The council met in closed session until about 5:25 PM. And with that, I will turn it over to the mayor to continue the announcement.
So tonight, we are sharing some especially exciting news from our closed session related to our search for a city manager. We have, over the past several months, interviewed more than 70 candidates through our national search for a city manager position. We narrowed it down to eight candidates, which we interviewed, and we had a second round of interviews with our top four candidates. And we believe we have chosen the very best person for our city. She has more than 27 years working in local governments, including 17 years working for the city of West Hollywood. She has a master's degree from public policy from UCLA. And we are very happy to say that we have selected Jackie Rocco. We have selected Jackie Rocco as the city of West Hollywood's next city manager. This selection is subject to approval of her contract at the December 15th City Council Meeting. In the meantime, a very warm congratulations to Jackie Rocco on her selection. We can go to an approval of the agenda now. That great news?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes from staff this evening.
I think we have some changes from councilmembers. Councilmember Erickson?
Sure. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I was wondering if we could move Item F1, the Amendment to Measure M Funding Agreement between West Hollywood and Los Angeles Metropolitan Transit Authority?
Yep.
Wonderful. I was wondering if we could move F2, authorizing the letters of support for future loan commitments to affordable housing at 1049 North Fairfax?
I do have a comment on that.
Okay. I was wondering if we could move F4, the expansion of the trapnuda return program and low-cost veterinary and animal care services?
Good point.
Great. And I will, yeah, people are very happy about that. And then I think that is the only other thing. I don't know if there's any other appetite.
Are we interested in moving F5 to consent?
I have comments.
Okay. Comments, great. Okay. So we've moved F1, F2, and F, I'm sorry, F1 and F4 to consent.
Correct.
Great.
And the motion passes 5-0.
You have an approved agenda. Thank you. And do we have any Levine Act disclosures on our approved agenda? No? Seeing none, we'll go to our adjournment motions for this evening. Councilmember Erickson, I believe you have one?
Yes, thank you so much. I would like to adjourn in memory of Alice Wong. And this was a tribute put together by community member and Disabilities Advisory Board member Yola Doray. Today, we remember Alice Wong, a fierce disability justice advocate, writer, and community builder who passed away recently at the age of 51. Her loss is deeply felt across the disability community and beyond. Alice's life was defined by her bold insistence that people with disabilities deserve autonomy, respect, and full representation. Born in Indianapolis to immigrant parents from Hong Kong, she lived with muscular dystrophy using a powered wheelchair and assisted breathing device. She often described herself as a cyborg reclaiming the assistive technologies that kept her alive as an integral part of her identity. We extend our heartfelt condolences to all who knew Alice, who were inspired by her work, and to everyone touched by the legacy she leaves behind. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we will go to our presentations for this evening. First, recognizing the fabulous young ladies who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please come up and allow us to take a photo with you? We'll turn it to Councilwoman Dani Heng for a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to recognize an organization with the proclamation, "It Gets Better," in honor of their remarkable work uplifting LGBTQ+ youth in celebration of their 15th anniversary. Whereas, It Gets Better is a nonprofit organization dedicated to uplifting, empowering, and connecting lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer youth around the globe. And whereas, since posting its first video in 2010, created in response to a tragic wave of suicides claiming the lives of several LGBTQ+ youth, It Gets Better has ignited a worldwide movement grounded in storytelling, education, and community building. And whereas, through its diverse programs, It Gets Better helps queer youth envision a future they are excited to embrace by offering affirming stories, accessible resources, and meaningful opportunities for personal growth and connection. And whereas, the organization's work fosters confidence, leadership development, and support networks that build resilience among LGBTQ youth, empowering them to navigate challenges with clarity, hope, and strength. And whereas, It Gets Better celebrates its 15th anniversary, the city of West Hollywood is honored to recognize the organization for its unwavering commitment to the well-being, visibility, and empowerment of LGBTQ youth in West Hollywood and around the world. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of West Hollywood hereby recognizes It Gets Better on the occasion of its 15th anniversary and commends the organization for its continued impact and leadership in empowering LGBTQ+ youth across the globe. At this time, I would like to ask representatives from It Gets Better to come up to the dais to accept this proclamation and to take a photo with myself and my colleagues. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I am Brian Wenke, the Executive Director of It Gets Better, and I have been with the organization for almost a decade now. And I've seen a lot. And our community rarely has a moment to stop, take a breath before we are rushing into the next battle to fight for our right to exist. And the challenges that LGBTQ+ youth are experiencing today are very similar to the ones that they were experiencing 15 years ago when our organization was founded in the wake of a suicide contagion that claimed the lives of kids like Tyler Clemente, Seth Walsh, and Billy Lucas. And as you can imagine, I have a lot of people asking me, "Does it really get better?" And to which I always respond, "You bet your ass it does." And we owe it to LGBTQ+ youth to show them that it's okay to believe in a future with unlimited potential even when it seems out of reach. So that's what this proclamation means to me. It's what it means to It Gets Better. It's the adults in the room standing up saying that no matter what, no matter how much time has passed, we will be there to support LGBTQ+ youth in their time of need. So thank you very much. I appreciate this honor.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move to public comment at this time. The City Council values your comments. However, pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. The public comment period is limited to 20 minutes with two minutes allotted for each speaker. The public comment period is to address the City Council on consent calendar items, other agenda items if the member of the public cannot be present at the time the item is considered, or items of general interest within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Another period is also reserved for the general comment later in the meeting for those that could not be heard at this time. Public hearing testimony will only be taken at the time of the hearing. City Clerk, how many speakers do we have signed up in chambers and in Zoom?
Thank you, Mayor. In chambers, we have six individuals, and we have one individual in Zoom.
Great. We'll start with here in chambers. I see Karen Ayers signed up to speak first, followed by Catherine KT Thomas, and then Shannon Houston.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'll be brief. You put on consent, the item that I was here to speak about. Thank you for doing that. It's time that we look into fulfilling a commitment to the little critters in our city. We know coyotes are coming down, and we know that it does no good for cats to be able to breed and create more of the same. So this plan to look into further what we can do here in the city is a great one. Thank you for moving it forward.
Thank you. Catherine Thomas, followed by Shannon Houston, followed by David Nash.
Good evening. I'm Catherine KT Thomas. I'm here on behalf of the Women's Advisory Board to share some updates with the community. In early October, the city of Los Angeles Women's Commission invited us to participate in a menopause roundtable alongside other progressive cities, including London and Melbourne, Australia. We focused on menopause in the workplace and had valuable conversations with like-minded cities about the future of women's health and what municipalities around the world are doing to address these issues. The board also participated in the annual statewide gathering of the commissions and boards hosted by the California Commission on the Status of Women and Girls and the Los Angeles County Commission for Women. This day-long event brought together representatives from across the state for learning and reflection on key issues affecting women. We came away with shared goals that we'll be addressing throughout the year with other women's commissions and boards. Some of those included housing, healthcare, pay equity and wealth gender, gender bias and discrimination, support for survivors of foster care and human trafficking, career development for girls, and product safety and women's health. During the month of October, the board helped share awareness information and resources about breast cancer, intimate partner violence, menopause and perimenopause, and endometriosis education. At our November meeting, the board discussed various community and nightlife safety issues impacting women with Captain Fanny Lapkin and Director of Community Safety, Dani Rivas, including data pertaining to sexual assault, domestic violence, and drink spiking incidents and their prevention reduction efforts. Looking ahead, I want to update you on what we have in development for the Women's History Month next March. We have a full slate of events, but the centerpiece will be the Women's Health Symposium. We'll be covering topics like understanding healthcare coverage, reproductive health, cancer education, healthy aging, and so forth, and many, many issues that women navigate every day. We're excited to host this event, not just for West Hollywood residents, but for people throughout Los Angeles County. More details will be available soon. If you'd like to learn more, please visit weho.org. And thank you.
Thank you.
And congrats.
Shannon Houston, followed by David Nash, followed by MJ and Renee.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Shannon Houston, and I work for Pathways L.A. as the Director of Family and Childcare Provider Services. We are excited to celebrate our 35-year partnership with this great city where we have operated the West Hollywood preschool located currently in the Plummer Park. We currently operate at full capacity with two aging classrooms generously provided for our use by the city of West Hollywood. In these classrooms, we currently serve 32 preschool children with subsidized early childcare and education. We would like to build on this great partnership of 35 years by expanding to serve up to 85 children through a mixed delivery model that includes both subsidized care, as we're currently providing, and fee-based slots for infants, toddlers, and preschool children. This would allow us to continue to serve the low-income families who appreciate the care that we provide, and also expand to serve low-income families that are in the middle-income bracket so that they also have access to quality early childcare services here in this community. In addition to our goal of expanding access to quality early childhood education, we want to ensure adequate space for the children we are already serving. The bungalows that we are currently in are very small and old and are needing significant maintenance. We are in need of additional space, and that is why we come to you, and we ask that you would support us in this endeavor. We could either use space currently allocated at Plummer Park, the Great Hall, Long Hall, or a couple other parts of the park that have been identified through the project improvement plan, or we are open to using other facilities here available in the city of West Hollywood that are currently underutilized. Our commitment is simple. We are committed to expand our services to be able to provide care for more children and families here in West Hollywood with your support. Thank you.
Thank you. David Nash, followed by MJ and Renee, followed by Ed Holman.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I particularly enjoyed your comments at the AIDS Memorial right before this meeting. I am angry tonight. I'm going to try to speak in a calm manner, but I'm very frustrated, and it's a difficult time. I live in a building full of people with disabilities. It was originally created for people living with HIV/AIDS. And for some period now, we've had a manager who has a foul mouth and is, just has an inappropriate attitude towards dealing with people who have disabilities. No matter how mentally ill you are, you don't need to be told that the manager doesn't give an F who you are, or to get the F out of her office and have the door slammed in your face. It's just not appropriate, and that kind of attitude happens too often towards residents. We had that when the building began with the original management team and the property manager at the Housing Corporation. They were removed thanks to the help of Joel Hecht, our very effective city mediator. We also have a problem with some extremely disabled people, and I've spoken before about the difficulty that you have at the end of people's lives. But you can imagine if someone has both their legs removed, for example, that they could be suffering extreme anger and distress. And there's a price, a toll that takes on the other people that live there when someone is so outraged that they bang their head against the wall and yell after midnight. No matter how distressing their situation is, it's inappropriate for the other people that live there to be subjected to that kind of desperate hostility. I thank you for listening, and I know you'll find some way to be helpful. Last, please. Please call the actor, Swan Keith McNutt, at 323-933-9244. Thank you.
Thank you. MJ and Renee, followed by Ed Holman.
Good evening, City Council and our first official cat mayor, Chelsea Byers. My name's MJ Goges. We're here with Renee Sotill, longtime WeHo citizens, and thank you for moving forward effort in expanding the TNR program. Our first official trap neuter return with the city was two years ago, September 2023, and since then, we have fixed way over 100 cats now. So thanks to the program, right? So, and cats and kittens and feral and our community cats, the ones that aren't spayed or neutered, are contributing factors to the overpopulations in our shelters. It's as simple as that. So WeHo is now leading the way by literally fixing the problem. At least WeHo is leading the way in this city. The expansion of the Community Cats TNR program will ensure sustainable, long-term solution for our friendly cats and kittens to get the care and homes they've needed. We're seeing an increase of some abandoned cats and friendly kitties. You know, they gotta be at home in somebody's lap, don't they? So rehoming our friendlies will also prevent litters of kittens born on our WeHo streets. And just over these past few months, we have found homes for 12 cats and kittens, and we're honored to be part of this new, expanding, positive movement.
They all get a kitten.
Yeah, each one of you. You get a kitten. You get a kitten. One, two, three, four, five. So it's been our pleasure to work with countless residents who we now consider part of our WeHo Community Cat Team. So contact us if you need help. We're at westhollywoodcommunitycats.com. So thanks for making this for real. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's great to see a female majority up here. Nothing against the guys, but yeah. Thank you, Councilmember.
Ed Holman, followed by Michael Garten.
Good evening, Councilmembers. And once again, congratulations, Jackie. Congratulations. I'd like to ask the city if they can reconsider or consider not approving permits for power shut-off within the four days or so of a major food holiday. We just had Thanksgiving last week, and on Monday of last week, the SCE had our power shut-off for a whole block, Flores and Sweetser, to install new poles in between the buildings. And it was... it was... a lot of people were ticked off because a lot of people had just purchased their Thanksgiving food and worried about spoilage and whatnot. I know it was just... it was a whole-day event. So we can look into maybe not doing permits for utilities but shut-off around food holidays. Somebody mentioned coyotes earlier. I was going to speak about that. We've got some in our area. I reported them on the app to the city and was given some instructions on what to do about leaving with them instead of trying to get them out of the way. One suggestion was making noise. So I suggest like an empty soda can with some pennies in it, shaky, see them, get them the heck out of there. And then, last thing I wanted to say, thank you, thank you, thank you, mahalo gracias, for installing those new bollards up on Fountain, near Harper, and at the other end, closer towards La Brea. I've been talking to Councilmember Erickson about these for a few years now, and they were replaced with orange cones for a while. These look so much better, and I hope these will be useful for a very long time in the city. And that's all I got. Have a great night.
Thank you. Michael Garten will be our last speaker in council chambers, and then we'll go to Zoom.
Hi, I'm Michael Garten. I lived on Olive Drive for 46 years. I was born and raised here. And anyway, two things. There's a parking spot in front of our apartment building on the street, and it's... was 30 years ago, something in the building was mad, and they painted it red. And it's... and every time I see the guys painting the curbs in the front, I said, "This is not supposed to be red." And the guy, the last guy, he goes, "Yeah, I went down there. Sure, it's not supposed to be painted red." He said, "Well, you have to come to here to make sure that they have it taken off of there, because that's an extra space, because we have so many problems with parking there." Anyway, then I have a thing with... my daughter came from Las Vegas to see me. She... we haven't seen it for 10 years, and she put the parking pass for the last two days. And the third day she was here, it fell off, and it fell on the dash in the center. They didn't see it, so they gave her a ticket. And they always say, I think if you come in so many minutes, if you get it, you're supposed to be able to have it dismissed. But it was... this was 12:30 at night. So... but anyway, I was just wondering if they could dismiss it, because it's like... and I heard that you're supposed to get a free pass like that once a year when you live here. And it's worked every year. I just thought I'd mention that, but...
We have a staff member in the back fence. I think you... yeah, he's waving his hand in the back corner. Maybe you can speak with him before you leave the meeting tonight. He can help you out with some of those.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. There was... and my apartment building above us, there's five spaces that have painted red, and they did it because there's a... it used to be a key thing. That was... that was gotten rid of 30 years ago. So if they could remove that park, those, you have six more spaces on that street there, because nobody uses it anymore. They just did it because people came in with their key. So they had to have six feet or whatever it was. So if they can take care of that, too. Thank you.
Thank you for the heads up on that. I believe that's our last speaker in council chambers. We'll go to Zoom.
Our speaker is Adam Darvish. Adam, you'll have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute.
Thank you, last but not least. I'm Adam Darvish, resident. Good evening, Mayor Byers, West Mayor Howman, as Council and staff. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Jackie for, if not to the occasion, you're known to many of us in the city, and I've had always had great experience with you, with follow-ups. So congratulations. You've become official. I'm calling tonight to thank our sheriff's station for starting back the patrolling on the bicycle. I've seen, and then there we have seen in the morning, the officer on the bicycle on San Vicente, on Larrabee, and Palm, which has helped a little bit. I wish that that could be expanded into nights, especially on the weekend, nights on Friday nights after midnight and Saturday nights, because there's a lot of activities, racing cars and street parties with people coming to attend the bars and just park on the streets and do whatever it takes to till four in the morning, and then all the trash that's left behind, helping with the contract with security and road conduct and also the sheriff's station, like a team of them, and help residents. Thank you so much again, and I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving holiday or weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our public comment. Thank you all so much for coming out to speak and share with us. We'll move to our city manager's report. Jackie, our interim city manager for now, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the public. I have a few announcements. Earlier tonight, we kicked off the opening of the WeHo Winter Ice Rink at West Hollywood Park. The ice rink is open daily now through December 21st. It is open Monday through Thursday, 4:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m., Fridays, 2:00 to 3:30 p.m., and again at 6:00 to 9:30 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday from 12:00 to 9:30 p.m. I hope you can all come and enjoy it. Additionally, this weekend, the area around WeHo Winter Ice Rink will be turned into a festive Rainbow District Winter Market on both Saturday, December 6th, and Sunday, December 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Come out and enjoy some shopping, local bites, live DJs, and specialty pop-ups experiences from some of your favorite Rainbow District businesses and local artisans. For more information, visit go.wihoh.org/icerink. Also, the city has launched the Hello WeHo, a new online newsletter website. The site offers timely updates, stories, and content that goes beyond our traditional news releases. In the weeks ahead, we'll publish new items each week, introduce a twice-monthly email newsletter, and once a week, text as some digest that highlights key stories and links back to the site. Community members may visit the new site at www.helloweho.com. Also, the city joins communities worldwide today in recognizing World AIDS Day, reaffirming our longstanding commitment to supporting people living with HIV and honoring those lost to AIDS-related illnesses. Throughout the day, WeHo TV displayed AIDS Watch, the 24-hour Worldwide Memorial. This evening, community members gathered at Stories, the AIDS Monument, to uplift the voices and experiences of those who have shaped and who have continued to shape the fight against HIV/AIDS. On December 10th, we invite the community to the Paul Andrew Stark Warrior Awards here at the council chambers. As we continue advancing the goals of the city's HIV Zero Initiative, we thank our partners, advocates, and community members for their leadership, resilience, and unwavering dedication. And that concludes my comments today.
Thank you very much. May we get the fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar, city clerk?
Yes, Mayor. The fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar with the addition of items F1 and F4 is $1,231,693 in expenditures, $300,000 in revenue, and $0 in waived fees. There is a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent calendar. And the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We'll go straight into our first public hearing of the night. Item C1, our zoning ordinance amendment for housing dwelling typologies for unhoused persons and persons with special needs in compliance with state law. I'll turn it over to our staff team to present as you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and Community Members. Nick Marisic, Director of Community Development, joined this evening by our team here, Jennifer Alkire, our Assistant Director, Francisco Contreras, Long Range Planning Manager, and we have Paige Portwood, Associate Planner, who will be giving tonight's presentation, and she's joined by Adrienne Staub, Assistant Planner.
And before you present, Paige, one second. The public hearing is now open. How was the hearing noticed, city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. It was noticed as required by law.
Terrific. Back to you, Paige.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council and members of the public. The item before you this evening is a zone text amendment to update the West Hollywood zoning code in accordance with state law, which aims to facilitate the development of housing for people experiencing homelessness and persons with special needs. This ETA is a technical update. The item does not create or cite new programs. It updates the zoning framework so that our land use regulations reflect current state mandates. Staff is also joined by Rincon Senior Planner Susan Hernandez via Zoom, who advised staff in assisting drafting the materials of this item throughout this lengthy process. Here's a brief overview of the presentation, which will take about five minutes. The city's Housing Element Program Number 21 requires staff to update the zoning code to bring it into compliance with various state laws regarding zoning and permitting requirements for specific housing types.
We... none of us seem to have the presentations on our screens. I also just... maybe we don't need a full five-minute presentation. Doesn't seem like there's any members of the public signed up to speak tonight. Great.
And this seems to be one of those things that we just have to do to comply with state laws.
So given that we can't have a presentation on our screens in front of us, maybe just a modified explainer of what we're going through so public who's watching, and then we'll move forward. Sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Prevent us from doing that.
So on the screen here, you'll see these five different housing types that we are updating. I wanted to point out the Low Barrier Navigation Centers is the only new code section that we are adding. The other four are clarifications, updates to the definition, and updates to provide more flexibility on the streamlining. So they are permitted as state law mandates. That sort of concludes our presentation. We're here to answer any questions, if you have any, on specific uses.
Terrific. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Seeing that there's no members of the public signed up to speak, we could close the public testimony?
I'm prepared to move to close the public hearing and introduce the zone text amendment.
Okay, and we have a second for that as well. Seeing no additional questions or comments, we'll thank staff for your presentation. As incredible...
Okay, we're losing other technology in the room. So I'm going to do a voice vote. Councilmember Erickson. And this is to introduce on first reading an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Hollywood... I'm just going to keep reading. Amending Tunnel 19, zoning ordinance of the West Hollywood Municipal Code, amending regulations for housing typologies for unhoused persons and persons with special needs in accordance with state law, and finding such action does not qualify as a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, and is otherwise exempt under state SEQA guidelines, Sections 15378b5 and 15061b3. And with that, we have our...
City Clerk?
Yes.
Can we read into the record one minor clarification that we wanted to add?
Sure.
We did want to read into the record a minor clarification to the ordinance to be incorporated on page seven of 10, Section 6, Table 2.5. We want to add to the specific use regulations column for supportive housing uses for both 50 units or less and more than 50 units the following language: Non-residential floor area dedicated for services satisfies any mixed-use requirement. And does the maker of the motion and the second agree with that change?
Yes.
Perfect. So we have the motion and the second, and we voted, and the motion passes 5-0. So we're having some technical difficulties, but we'll with them as they come.
Perfect. Thank you all very much. We will move to item C2, the Zone Text Amendment to encourage and facilitate the conversion of existing commercial developments to residential uses. The public hearing is now open. Are there any disclosures from council members? No.
I spoke with some members of the community, as well as people who are going to give public comment tonight, but they don't have an actual role in the actual decision.
As did I. Any other... okay, the... and the city clerk, how is this hearing noticed?
As required by law, Mayor.
Terrific. We'll turn this over to our staff representatives to introduce yourselves. And we do have members of the public signed up on this item, just so my colleagues know.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, my name's Jennifer Alkire. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Development. I'm joined here by the team, including Director Nick Marisic, Planning Manager Francisco Contreras, and Jordan Parish, Contract Planner with Long Range Planning, who will be giving our presentation momentarily. Hopefully, you will be able to see it.
Hopefully.
We can see it back here.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, we are being asked to adopt a Zone Text Amendment that streamlines the approval process for converting existing commercial buildings to housing. This ordinance implements our Certified Housing Element and Climate Action and Adaption Plan by allowing adaptive reuse projects to be reapproved ministerially when they meet clear objective standards. This evening, we are presenting two options of this ordinance for your consideration based on requests from the Planning Commission. Option one will include hotels and motels as eligible for ministerial approval, and option two will exclude hotels and motels. I will provide an overview of this ordinance and then summarize the key trade-offs council may want to consider when deciding between these two options. This proposed ordinance is an outgrowth of West Hollywood's Housing Element Program 11, which calls for the city to study and develop regulations that help streamline development standards for the conversion of office space into housing. This Zone Text Amendment responds to this directive by creating a clear ministerial pathway for qualifying projects. Conversions help expand housing supply, reduce carbon impacts compared to new construction, help the city retain existing buildings, and help revitalize underutilized corridors. Converting existing buildings supports the city's climate action goals by reducing carbon impacts and providing opportunities for energy-efficient upgrades. Our research included reviews of the adaptive reuse policy frameworks of Santa Monica, Los Angeles, and Beverly Hills. We also reviewed urban planning research and post-pandemic market analyses to determine best practices on a wider regional and national scale. We also met with developers with experience in local conversion projects and presented our findings to the LRPSC and the Planning Commission.
I'm going to have you pause just for one minute while we try to sort out a technical issue, so... let's just pause for maybe a moment, and we'll decide if we need to recess. Okay, thank you for your patience. We'll let you carry on with the presentation. Thank you, Jordan.
All right. Coming back to research and outreach, our research identified, oh, pardon me, wrong slide. There we go. Okay. Our research identified three main policy-related challenges for conversion projects. Unclear rules lead to delays in expenses, unneeded design standards add costs without adding proportionate benefits, and historic building layouts are often prohibitively expensive to adapt to current design preferences. This ordinance provides solutions for each of these challenges by establishing clear criteria for ministerial approval, providing carefully targeted waivers to existing design standards, and including structural retention and reuse requirements which allow design flexibility without compromising necessary standards. Conversion projects which do not fulfill the requirements for ministerial approval will be subject to the city's existing discretionary process. Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 for approval but requested City Council to discuss inclusion of hotel and motel conversions for ministerial approval in response to public comments, which raised questions about the economic and labor impacts of hotel-to-housing conversions. In response to the Commission's request, city staff have drafted two versions of the ordinance for the council to consider. Option one includes hotel and motel conversion projects as eligible for ministerial approval. Option two excludes hotels and motel conversion projects from eligibility for ministerial approval. And the two versions of this ordinance, both option one and two, are otherwise identical. The advantages of option one include an expanded pool of eligible sites, which improve housing production potential, and facilitate a more predictable and uniform set of standards for all commercial building types. The advantages of option two, which excludes hotels and motels, are that it addresses employment-related concerns expressed by hospitality workers and allows case-by-case evaluation of hotel conversions through discretionary review. In conclusion, staff recommend that council reviews both ordinance options, selects option one or option two as a preferred policy direction, and introduces the chosen ordinance on first reading. Thank you. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We can go straight to our public comment and then come back to questions or comments. So we'll take Jonah Brezlow from Unite Here Local 11 at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jonah Brezlow. I'm here on behalf of Unite Here Local 11, and I would encourage you to move forward with this universe, ordinance as proposed in option two, with some amendments for clarification such that existing hotels are not allowed to be converted to residential through the ministerial process, and that the conversion of existing commercial buildings to proposed mixed hotel and residential projects is also not allowed ministerially. It's no secret that Southern California remains woefully behind on affordable housing goals, and the urgency of addressing this shortfall serves as the express motivation behind expanding adaptive reuse under the ordinance as a whole. But at the same time, our county is set to host some of the world's largest sporting and entertainment events in the coming years, first with eight FIFA World Cup matches in 2026, and then in 2028 with the Summer Olympics. The tension between these two priorities fuels a cyclical churn in redevelopment that could create real inefficiencies that displace both workers from their jobs and residents from their housing. Reconciling these priorities requires a careful and balanced approach, particularly when it comes to large development and redevelopment projects that can have an outsized effect on the balance of housing and overnight accommodation. Local 11 strongly supports increasing affordable housing supply in the city, but applying the ordinance's streamlined conversion process to all hotels or to projects that may include hotels could exacerbate these policy contradictions, including by unintentionally encouraging more short-term rentals. Similarly, we believe that conversions to mixed-use hotel and residential uses should be subject to a careful and thorough consideration with a public process that may not be possible under the streamlined proposal. So we have suggested some language to exclude conversions from hotels to residential and exclude conversions that would create hotels, as detailed in the comments we sent earlier. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't see any other members of the public signed up to speak in council chambers or on Zoom.
No, we have no other speakers.
Okay. So with that, I will close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Council may still ask questions of staff, but we'll move on to deliberations. Would my colleagues like to begin discussion? Councilmember Meister?
Thank you very much, staff, and to the members of the public. I support option two. I think the modifications that are being requested by the public speaker fit in line with the reasonable needs that I think we can work on here. I also watched the Planning Commission meeting and so found that to kind of align with my thinking. Additionally, I think for the sake of the community's benefit, also ensuring that if we're going to move forward with moving a hotel into residential properties would need a longer process than ministerial in that way. They're used to having these in their backyards versus not. It's a big change of use. And so I think just making sure we have a few checks and balances in that is important. And so I'm in support of option two, Madam Mayor, with the proposed changes, and I'm happy to read those types of things into the record for the, if my colleagues agree.
Sure. Thank you for having that ready. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yes, thank you. I support option number one. I think we would be hypocritical if we adopted option two, given the fact that we just allowed and funded the conversion of a hotel to a shelter facility, which is purely residential. I don't think any of our major hotels will be looking to convert to residential, but there are a couple of hotel or motels that I think would be desirable to convert from hotel use to residential. I also believe that this ordinance doesn't have an adverse impact on residents because when we look at it, it is converting commercial buildings to residential. So I think the conversion of commercial buildings are almost all going to be in commercial zones. Transferring that or converting it to residential would be a net gain, and it would actually probably reduce the impact on residents. The primary focus of this ordinance is to give us a quicker opportunity for commercial buildings to be converted to residential, and we know that some of our office buildings are struggling in particular, and I think we need to allow any commercial building to convert to residential as expeditiously as possible. So I support option one.
Thank you. Councilmember Hang?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of option two because it protects local oversight and public access and the public process, right? Housing and hotel conversion decisions are not one-size-fits-all, and that's what a ministerial process is. And it also preserves TOT revenue, which is our crown jewel here in the City of West Hollywood that we rely heavily on. And option two also maintains flexibility instead of like a hardwiring policy. It preserves our ability to respond to changing conditions and not lock ourselves into automatic approvals. And it also protects the role of the Planning Commission and the City Council. It does protect the discretionary role of both the Commission and the council. So there is a process by way that conversions can occur that works fine, and I think it's fine that we can continue that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually would support option one. As the Vice Mayor said, if we didn't allow these conversions, we wouldn't have been able to convert the Holloway. We, you know, there's other motels, for example, Alta Sianega, and some others that I won't name that are probably, you know, we would, the city would be better off with them being residential. I also think that we have a number of hotels in residential neighborhoods that were converted years ago from residential to hotels. Now, not that I think that they're going to ever change, but if they did change back, I can almost guarantee that the residents that live in those areas probably would be happier with having residential neighbors versus hotel guests. And I think that we should at least leave that option open because we did lose several buildings to hotels that were residential buildings.
Thank you. Because there's been an idea said tonight about Holloway, there would, if option two was the pathway, there would still be a pathway for hotels, motels to make a conversion. It just wouldn't be this ministerial streamlined pathway, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. So option one isn't necessarily keeping an option open that would otherwise be closed to option two. So I also am in support of option two, the concern being the loss of TOT with the potential conversion, the concern being around some of the impacts on the neighborhood level, which I'm not also convinced would be so easy. But I ultimately think this item was looking at commercial broadly, and we've often looked at mixed use, especially with the hotel purposes, as a different sort of landing pad for these sort of conversations. And I think continuing that way, not making it ministerial, but making it, as Councilmember Hang said, through the continued way that we have now, works well for this. So I'm also in support of option two in order to make sure that the commercial pathway is clear and those easy transitions have that easiest pathway possible. Councilmember Erickson, you said you had some language suggestions, though, if we were to go with option two?
Yes.
Is it modifying the ordinance?
Yeah, I think it's adding to 19.36.400. B.
Do you have a page?
I don't have my iPad with me. Let me pull it up. Jennifer, do you? Let me know if you get it before me. Page three of nine, Section 4. Thank you, Councilmember Hang. Section 4A, it's like having a person whisper in my ears. Oh, never mind. We're leading you down a goose chase. I'm pulling it up right now. I left my iPad at home today.
Councilmember Erickson, does it start with conversion of non-residential land?
It's applicability. This section applies to conversions, i.e. physical alteration or reuse of existing non-residential uses.
So I'm on attachment A, page three.
I think so, yeah.
Residential conversions applicability.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time, Mayor? Page three?
It should be on page three of 10.
Yep, right here. So I would just add to B the following: This section shall in no circumstance apply to conversions of an existing hotel and/or motel to residential uses or to a proposed mixed-use project that dedicates any floor area to a hotel or motel use.
Is that a part of the motion?
That would be, yeah, so I'll, but they look like they're conferring, so I don't want to get ahead of them.
No, no, that sounds perfectly fine, Councilmember. I just want to ensure everybody that this is for this particular part of the ordinance for ministerial approval for conversions. It doesn't necessarily exclude projects from trying to do this in any other fashion as available through the zoning ordinance. So, yeah, we're amenable to that change.
Great. So I will just make a motion to approve option, to recommend option two as well with that existing change that I read in, as long as staff caught it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hang, do you have any?
Do we want to read it into the record?
Yeah.
Sure. Do you want me to?
Francisco, do you have the full section?
It's on page three of nine, 19.36. So my motion includes a motion to approve staff's recommendation, but staff's recommendation two with the.
It's on page three of 10. Because the option two is the 10-page ordinance, right? Not the nine-page ordinance.
Right. Page.
Section four.
Right. So Section 19.36.400. B. At the end of that existing paragraph or the proposed paragraph, we would add this new sentence, which says, "This section shall in no circumstance apply to conversions of an existing hotel and/or motel to residential uses or to a proposed mixed-use project that dedicates any floor area to a hotel or motel use." Period.
Yep. You are a fast typer, Francisco.
Fabulous.
Great. And we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt or introduce on first reading this ordinance?
I don't support the change, but I am going to vote for the motion because the rest of the ordinance, I think, is an improvement over our current processes.
Okay. So we will note for the record that you support the ordinance without the change. So for the record, Councilmember Meister and Vice Mayor Heilman support the ordinance without the language change, and Mayor Byers, Councilmember Erickson, and Councilmember Hang support the ordinance as introduced with the changes. That's clear as mud, but we'll go with it. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. We have a vote. My screen hasn't switched yet.
And we closed the public hearing, right?
Yes, we did. We did do it that time.
Definitely a part of my motion.
We'll move on to our legislative item D1, Consideration of an Ordinance Establishing Regulations for Personal Delivery Devices and Agreements with Eligible Operators. We'll give our staff some time to get seated for a short presentation. We do have a number of public commenters signed up for this item. Do you need a presentation?
Good evening, City Council, members of the public. My name is Paige Portwood, Associate Planner. I have officially transitioned to the New Transportation and Mobility Division within the Department of Public Works under Director Helen Collins and Division Manager Tamar Ferrer, who are joining me on this item this evening. Also joining us are Nicholas Marisic, Jennifer Alkire, and Francisco Contreras from the Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is regarding the consideration of an ordinance establishing regulations for personal delivery devices and operating agreements with eligible operators. Here's the presentation outline. We anticipate the presentation to take about eight minutes maximum. Personal delivery devices, or PDDs, are autonomous or semi-autonomous delivery devices that delivers goods such as food, groceries, or retail items directly to people's residences or places of work from participating businesses. The goal of these devices is to deliver goods for relatively short distances, what is often referred to as the last mile. On March 2nd, the City Council approved a pilot program license agreement with Postmates to deploy PDDs. The pilot program formally launched December 2020 but was temporarily halted due to Uber Technologies' acquisition of Postmates. On December 6, 2021, the city extended the pilot program and refined the conditions of the extended pilot. At this meeting, the City Council also directed staff to invite additional operators to participate in the pilot program, limiting the maximum number of operators to three. The city released a call for applications in April 2022, received one application from COCO, which was selected to be a part of the extended pilot program. They began operations in September of 2023. According to the most recent biannual report, COCO and SERF has cumulatively yielded over 34,000 trips from January to June 2025, equating to approximately. from January to June 2025, equating to approximately 180 trips per day. The average trip distance per device is about 0.69 miles, with an average trip duration of 16 and 1/2 minutes. SERV operates a larger fleet deploying an average of 30 vehicles or devices per day, while Koko deploys an average of seven vehicles per day. Since 2020, the city has conducted a pilot program with these two PDD operators, gathering data on their operations, safety, community impacts, et cetera. And that all has informed the proposed ordinance that you see before you this evening. The ordinance establishes a framework to ensure PDD operations will be established, will establish standards of operation for applicable operators, which include clear accessibility protections, proactive community engagement, and technology-based safeguards, such as geo-fencing and automated incident alerts. Here is a list of some of the high-level regulations that the ordinance will set forth, notably explicitly prohibiting deploying or operating a device, a PDD device, without an operating agreement, establishing the application process and requirements of an operating agreement. Codifying these provisions in Chapter 11.50 ensures clear enforcement, authority, consistency across the operators, and adaptability to technological change. The proposed program operating agreement outlines the terms of operations for only the authorized operators in more detail. The operating agreement defines the daily operation terms, such as parking and deployment requirements. The operating agreement was largely informed by the previous years of the pilot program, recommendations from the Transportation and Mobility Commission, and feedback from the Disabilities Advisory Board. We also wanted to note that the Transportation and Mobility Commission unanimously voted to recommend a permanent program with the revisions that staff has incorporated into the proposed agreement. The operating agreement also includes a program fee, which is a non-refundable annual operating fee of $2,500 per every 10 devices. So, you'll see the structure as it increases depending on the size of the fleet. Staff also met with both operators to negotiate the terms of the advertising revenue share. And staff are recommending an advertising fee of $6 per device per day for devices that display advertising. Currently, advertising is not allowed under the pilot program, so this would be a new addition for the operators. As outlined before, operators will be limited to a fleet size of 30 devices per day. Therefore, we anticipate approximately $5,400 per month to be generated if the operators opt into advertising. We did want to note that the operators have countered this proposal and are requesting an advertising fee of $4 per device per day. So, here are the recommendations that we've presented this evening. Overall, the general program statistics, coupled with the extensive spatial utilization of the pilot program, demonstrate that PDDs have become a consistent delivery mode for users and for merchants. The program has showcased a high frequency of short neighborhood-serving trips. By reducing the number of short-vehicle trips, PDDs may also contribute to lower greenhouse gas emissions, reduce vehicular congestion, and improve air quality. That concludes our presentation. We are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. I think before going to questions, we'll go to the members of the public to speak, and then we'll come back to you with anything we may have. First, we'll, member of the public to speak I see signed up is Rodrigo Bonta, followed by Justin Bunton, followed by Stephen W.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Rodrigo Bunton, and I'm a WeHo resident and a repeat customer for SERV. And I want to highlight how delivery service directly supports small businesses and local restaurants. We know all how delivery can cost and can take a break their margins. And these robots give more affordable, reliable, and way to serve the customers, which serve them way competitive, especially with the big chains. This kind of innovation keeps money in our community and help our favorite local places thrive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Justin Bunton, followed by Stephen W., followed by Kelly Jones.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having us. Hi, my name's Justin Bunton. I'm a proud member of the WeHo community. One of the things that makes me so proud is our ability to embrace change and new innovations, such as these delivery robots. They provide a clean, safe, reliable transportation that helps support, I'm sorry, mode of delivery that supports a sustainable sustainability. And the WeHo has been on the forefront of innovation for decades, and I'm glad to see that we are still here. Thank you.
Stephen W., followed by Kelly Jones, followed by Hiram Delgado.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As a West Hollywood resident, I just want to express my support for this policy. Delivery robots help our community. They reduce the number of cars driving through our neighborhoods, which means less noise and less congestion. They help local businesses with delivery without adding more drivers, which are, as we know, curb space is a delicate resource. Parking issue has been mentioned earlier this evening with a gentleman who is trying to get the curb repainted. So, we all know that that is an issue. And I just want to know that state, West Hollywood, should support more of these tools that can help keep our streets less congested, cleaner, and also help with accessibility issues for people with limited to no mobility. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kelly Jones from SERV Robotics, followed by Hiram Delgado. And we have some speakers in Zoom as well? Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Kelly Jones. I'm a proud resident of West Hollywood, Government Affairs Manager for SERV Robotics. And to start, SERV launched actually right here in WeHo back in 2020. For the folks who were in that room, very early that year, got to see the robot unveiled for the first time. And today, our zero emissions fleet has grown in both size and impact, serving over 50 restaurants across the city, from Dialogue Cafe to Pink Dot, Irving's Burgers, Nick the Greek, WeHo, Thai Noodles, El Poloco, and more. SERV Robots averages 0.6 miles, as mentioned in the staff report, and we're incredibly proud of that metric. It's one that demonstrates efficiency for small business and a solution to traffic congestion, as been mentioned. Now, let's talk about safety. Safety is and always will be foundational to our technology, and without it, we lose trust in our customers, our restaurant partners, and the public writ large. SERV Robots score a 99.8 completion rate for delivery, a near-perfect and safe score for folks who utilize our services. And I wanted to note that, just in closing, we aim to be good and trusted partners, going beyond food delivery to make a positive impact here in West Hollywood and across LA. While this is the first city that we've operated in, you know, we want to make sure that we strive to support things like Siklavia, the West Hollywood Pride Parade, you know, with the Thanksgiving meals that we delivered last week at the Holloway. We are so much more than just robots. There are hundreds of employees, one that you'll hear from tonight, that support our business model, and we're excited for your support and ask for your continued support of the PDD program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hiram Delgado is our final speaker, signed up in council chambers.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I myself work for SERV Robotics as well, pretty much. I'm just really pleased for you guys to be able to have me and talk about SERV Robotics here. On a personal level, I really enjoy working for them. I really enjoy living here in West Hollywood. One of my favorite things here is pretty much that I'm able to work in front of a company that I actually enjoy and be able to be local, be able to actually drive to them, bike to them, meet a lot of the locals as well, pretty much make those deliveries when not possible, make those repairs when not possible. People do come up to us, pretty much ask us about the robots. Pretty much, I love that I pretty much, we help with less traffic. So, no cars out there, pretty much it's all us, no emissions. So, that helps us a lot. One of my, I guess another one of my favorite things here is pretty much, as you guys know, West Hollywood has a lot of traffic, so we're seeing these robots pretty much just, you know, for each robot, it's two, three less cars out there. That's, so, thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to our speakers in Zoom.
Our first speaker is Keith Morrison. Keith, you'll have two minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Keith Morrison. I'm a WeHo resident. I want to share how SERV Robotics really supports our community, especially when it comes to affordability, which is important to me and a lot of folks at this time. Short-distance deliveries are often the ones that get neglected, they get neglected drivers because they earn less, the tips are lower, and those quick local trips really aren't worth it for many of the workers today. That means residents like myself, we wait longer, and our small businesses struggle to serve people right around the corner, which would be the most convenient for them. These robots, I've seen, help fill that gap. They don't require tips, which is great. They keep delivery costs down and make sure everyone, from myself to seniors, can get, you know, cheaper, reliable service and food services nearby. It's a simple innovation. We've seen it work. That helps make daily life a little bit easier for all of us, and I think that's what we need today. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Genevieve Morale.
Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor Heilman, and councilmembers. Genevieve Morale, West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to express the chamber's strong support for continuing SERV Robotics as an authorized operator in West Hollywood. As you heard earlier, these delivery components support business, and they are certainly something that is supported, as Ms. Jones said earlier. SERV has become a valuable partner to our local businesses, for restaurants and retailers, especially our small, independently-owned establishments. SERV provides reliable, contact-free delivery that helps them stay competitive, manage peak-hour demand, and meet the expectations of customers who increasingly rely on rapid local delivery. Our members consistently share that SERV is responsive, easy to work with, and committed to operating responsibly in our community, and their long presence here means they understand our streets, our density, and the needs of our merchants. As the city moves from a pilot program into a permanent structure, maintaining SERV as an operator insurance continuity for the businesses already depending on them, they've demonstrated professionalism, adaptability, and a willingness to collaborate with both the city and the business community. And as West Hollywood, as Kelly had earlier said, we were the first for them to operate in. We are innovative, as usual. West Hollywood leads the trend for these innovative and forward-thinking future devices. For these reasons, the chamber urges the council to support SERV's operating agreement and allow them to continue servicing West Hollywood businesses and customers. Thank you.
Are there not one more on the?
There are consultant for staff.
Okay, great. So, one more. Thank you. We'll go back to the council for discussion and deliberation. Who would like to begin, or who has any questions to get us started? Any questions? Councilmember Erickson, we'll go to you first.
I have some questions.
Okay, and then we'll go to you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, staff, for this wonderful report. I have a couple of just general questions. How many complaints have we gotten over our dear little robot overlords?
Yes. We received in the last year six complaints through our service request system, which is Acela. And we have received a handful via email to individual staff members.
So, would you say like, what, how do you quantify a handful, Paige? What's that in your mind?
I would say an average of two a month, if that.
Wonderful. So, let's just say 15 for funsies. So, you receive somewhere around one-ish a month. Do, in the last year? In regards to the complaints, are they the normal, like, it's just in the sidewalk or something around that nature?
Yes, we do receive some of that. And then we also see, like, safety concerns, like a flag has fallen off. Yeah, minor complaints like that.
How long has the pilot program been going on now?
Formally, I would say for two years.
Two years? And within those two total years, you don't have to give me the actual number, but ballpark it. How many total complaints minus the, I'll say 15? That's probably not the right number. But in the last, in the first year, how many were you really getting?
I can't speak on that. I wasn't overseeing the program at that time.
I always assume, because you did scooters, that you did this, and I apologize for making that assumption. But would you say maybe, based on what you've been seeing, similar patterns?
I would say that as a just observer.
Okay. Why did we decide to go from 40 to 30?
That was a recommendation from the Disabilities Advisory Board, and we looked at the statistics of the average size that SERV, who operates the largest fleet out of the two operators, were deploying on an average day. And so, we reduced that number. Additionally, I would say because we are inviting the advertising component, we do potentially expect maybe Koko and/or SERV to operate at their fullest fleet capacity. So, that potentially, right now, we're seeing about 40 total devices on the street across both operators. If they were to operate at the highest capacity, we would see 60 under the new agreement.
So, SERV and Koko would get up to 30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, there was no real metrics decision? It was based just on the recommendation from the DAB?
Feedback, and then the average deployment from SERV, who was the largest fleet size.
And can you walk me through, like, what is average deployment? Like, on one given day, you know, 60 people are ordering Thai food? That's where I'm ordering from, by the way, when I use it. You know, thank you, Otis Thai. This is not an endorsement. But, you know, in regards to like, what does that look like? What is an average day in West Hollywood look like for these devices?
So, they average around 180 trips per day, I believe, is what.
With minimal complaints?
Correct.
Okay. What types of advertising can be done? Is it static, just really like the wraparound?
Yes, they're wrapped, static, not digital at this point. That's not what we negotiated in the agreement.
Yeah. And they're doing it currently?
They are not doing it currently. We, they are not allowed to do it currently. They are doing it in other jurisdictions, such as the City of Santa Monica and the City of LA. They make, they are joining me this evening, so they may correct me, but other neighboring cities have not regulated advertising quite yet.
Okay, because, you know, when I got something delivered, it was advertising, you know, fantastic for. But maybe that was in, it came a long way from Santa Monica.
Yes.
Okay. Additionally, what would be the math, for example, if we? Because I'm seeing both proposals here, and so, and understanding they're $4 counter, but our 30 cap, 30-device cap, if we went to 40 instead, so that's 80 total, would there be a price differentiation versus the six? Do you see where I'm kind of going with this? Like, where is the middle ground? Because based on what I'm seeing, I just am trying to figure out why we wouldn't want to expand the program because it has been so successful. I even sat in on a panel where our mayor did at the National League of Cities, where she was then bombarded by multiple council members from Florida who really wanted it. But can you walk me through maybe how that math works or what that would look like?
Yes, I'll be honest, I'm not good at fast math.
That's okay. And if, Paige, you're good at many, many things, and I will take that as a reason.
I will say that we have, we contracted with our, what was it? Digital, our billboard advertising consultant, Premier Playfi, Playfi Premier. They gave us a in-depth analysis of what they recommended, our proposal B for advertising revenue. And that's where we got, landed at the $6. They actually, which is, I believe, it was like 20, it says it's in the report, 27 per. 27% fair market value. They actually recommended 35% fair market value. So, we have negotiated down from the original proposal that was recommended from our consultants. So, that's where that number has derived from.
Great. I'm sorry to interrupt the whole shebang. Yola DeRay has been trying to make a public comment, and she just randomly texted me. Hi, Yola.
She, she was in, and then she dropped out, and she's not in again. So, just have her come into the Zoom.
I will. Yola, if you are hearing this, try again. I think those conclude my questions right now, Madam Mayor.
Sure. We'll go to Vice Mayor Heilman next. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to all of the speakers tonight. The two concerns that I, or three concerns I want to raise, I've seen a number of the devices that don't have the flags on them, so that creates a little bit of a visibility issue, particularly when they're crossing the street. So, I want to make sure that that's one of the requirements in the ordinance, and that we have a methodology for enforcing. The second thing I've noticed on a couple of occasions, I know we've excluded Fountain because it's very narrow. There are some other streets that are also very narrow. Are we looking at those and determining whether there might be additional streets that we want to exclude from the program?
Absolutely, and that's why the operating agreement doesn't specify streets. We will be incorporating that through our online system.
One of the issues that's occurred, and I've noticed it because it occurs in front of my building, is they lose connection because of either some kind of technical issue, or the service isn't great in a particular location, and that results in the, in the robots stopping. And that can be an impediment. I called the other day because there were several of them that had just stopped at one location due to that kind of technical issue. How do we work with the providers here to ensure that they have a way of monitoring and promptly responding to those sort of concerns?
We have onboarded the, both operators into what we call our MDS platform. It's the same program that we use for the Dockless Mobility Program. We're able in real time to view where the devices are. We push out policy to them. We receive the data also from the devices itself, and we are able to monitor the program remotely that way.
Are they able to detect when a robot is stalled due to technical issues?
Yes, absolutely, and they have manipulated their data that they send to us to mark devices that are in need of maintenance, so we are able to see that on our platform as well.
I don't think these were devices that were in need of maintenance. It was really more a connectivity issue with, I guess, internet service in a particular location in the city, but I don't know exactly how they work. My other question is, and I'm sure it's related to what Yola is going to call us about, is the concerns about accessibility for others on the sidewalk. How are we addressing that? As my colleague said, we do get complaints, but there are some people who just don't like these no matter what. I notice that they stop if they observe anyone, so it seems to me that it's, it's not impairing anyone's right-of-way. But how do we, how do we address that concern?
That's a great question, and I think it'll be an iterative process, ongoing, day-to-day, that we work with the operators to establish, like you were saying, geofence, no operations zones for sidewalks that may not be able to hold the capacity of both a pedestrian and the devices. So, that's one thing that we can integrate into the new program. And the other thing is the penalties. We have penalties now set for anybody who raises a concern or complaint, can address it as an ADA urgent item. The operators have a time period, which they have to respond to the complaint, and we are able to penalize them and even suspend the agreement if there is not a proper response. The other, I don't know if you read in the staff report for members of the public, but we are reinvesting the program revenues into direct sidewalk improvement budget, so we are working on that. So, like I said, it will be a continuous process, but those are some of the things that we've incorporated in the permanent program.
Thank you. That's all my questions right now. I do have comments later.
Great. I'm going to go to Councilmember Meister, because I realized I skipped her after. I said I would go to you after Councilmember Erickson. I'm sorry. I know.
No, that's okay.
I saw her.
So, I have, I have some questions. Do we have an idea of what the, what revenue these two companies brought in over the, over the year?
I do not have that data. Kelly or Carl, I don't know if you're available to respond?
I guess I'm asking because I'm interested to find out how we came up with 2,500, 5,07500, you know, what was the basis of those numbers?
Yeah, so I can certainly answer that. The City of L.A., that is based on their fee structure for the PDDs. They are the only jurisdiction that I could find within our region that chart, that applies a fee for the program. For example, the City of Santa Monica doesn't charge any fees, and they don't have any penalties associated with their pilot program.
Okay. And do we, is there a reason that we're choosing two of them rather than just one of the services? Because it seems to me one of them, you know, was a, you know, 40, 30 vehicles with 40 trips a day, and the other only had an average of a couple of trips a day for each of their seven.
There are a couple reasons that we could, I could reference. So, the top that comes to mind is Cocoa and Serve, Serve, different merchants. So, participating businesses might use Cocoa, they might use Serve, so that allows a diverse market for the PDDs. Also, they both have been successful in the last two years of the pilot program, so we wanted to continue that legacy for the permanent program.
Okay, and then who's, like, who supervises them? Because, and I understand Councilmember Erickson's questioning, but I'm sure there are people who didn't, who don't call to complain. I'm one of them. I woke up one morning to all of my succulents on the, that were next to the sidewalk. They were literally just, it was, it was a sad death. Now, I had no idea. I thought a dog did it, whatever. My neighbor then told me, no, it was one of the robots actually got stuck, got caught on the side in the, in the, you know, in the parkway, and to get out, literally tore up my succulents. So, I guess my question is, who is supervising them? And what is, and what is their liability there? Is the city liable? Who's?
On a device basis, my understanding is Cocoa is semi-autonomous, so for each device, they actually have a pilot that remotely controls their devices, while Serve is fully autonomous. So, they do have employees who monitor the devices, but I think the ratio is something along the lines of one individual per five devices that they monitor, and they intervene when needed and necessary. So, that's what it kind of looks like, to my understanding, on the operations for each device. As far as the program goes, each operator is responsible for their own fleet, so that they have supervisors that will manage that. And certainly, the city intervenes anytime we get word of an occurrence like that happening, and we'll, we contact the operators immediately. And then we have, we, in the agreement, we have established the standard liability indemnification standards of any contract, which is $1 million.
Okay, and just getting back to the revenue, because this was something that was discussed with the, you know, scooters and the bicycles. We talked about, you know, revenue, and, and that was really how we looked at fees. So, I'm just, again, I'm going back to, you know, 180 trips per day, and the thousands that you say that they had over the year, you know, are we selling ourselves short with that fee schedule? Those are my questions.
Okay. The operators are here. If you wanted to have them ask any of those questions directly, Councilmember Meister. We have Carl Hansen in Zoom for Cocoa. He didn't speak earlier, but is available to, and Kelly is able to speak for Serve, if you wanted to get any clarity from them.
Okay, do we want to try to get Carl? We've asked him to turn on his video.
My audio is on. Am I audible?
Okay, you're audible. Go ahead.
Sweet. Yeah, good evening, Mayor Byers, and Vice Mayor Heilman, and council members. Really appreciate your time. I'm Carl Hansen. I head Government and Community Relations at Cocoa. We're proud to have been serving West Hollywood merchants and customers with affordable and sustainable deliveries since 2023. We're grateful to the city staff for bringing the proposed ordinance, and we strongly support the staff report with one concern around the advertising fee. Our goal is always to ensure that our service can remain cost-competitive with car-based delivery. When fees like program fees, which aren't paid by the car-based services, are applied to us, that becomes much more difficult. While most cities where we operate do not require a program fee, a few do. Cities like Los Angeles, where we've been operating for over half a decade, do include a permit fee, but allow us to offset that with advertising revenue, revenue, without any separate fees for advertising. The proposed $6 a day fee for, per bot would not work for most of the advertising campaigns we would pursue. At $4 per bot, displaying advertising per day, we could make this work, and that would provide, you know, important dollars back to the city for accessibility, infrastructure, and improvements, which we would be thrilled to help support. We're not a billboard company. We're a sustainable delivery service, and similar to bike-share systems and buses, who use advertising to subsidize the high cost of operating transportation services, we use advertising fees to keep our service affordable to local merchants. We're proud that the vast majority of our merchant partners are small and medium-sized businesses, and advertising fees ensure that we can serve even merchants with very small and low delivery volume. Really thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carl. Did you want to have Kelly up to respond to the revenue concerns?
We didn't really get an answer on what the revenue was for the past year. Just trying to, again, just get a sense of...
Are you asking for the revenue for the company, or what the cost-share model looked like under the pilot?
What the revenue of the company was in West Hollywood last year, for the one-year pilot.
Do either of the operators want to answer that question?
That specific number, I don't have in front of me. We did share our order volume with the city, and we could probably back-calculate it from there.
Thank you, Carl.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to respond. Councilmember Meister, Serve Robotics is a publicly traded company, so all of our filings are available online. In third quarter 2025, we reported 100, 687,000 in revenue. That's company-wide. That's not specific to West Hollywood. We're happy to dig into those numbers, if that's something that you'd like us to report back.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Meister, do you have any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Heng.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and, you know, I'm a climate action person. Do you know how many short-distance car trips were eliminated by the use of PDD?
That's a great question. I don't have that number in front of me.
And does that fall in line with our city's own climate action goal?
Yes, to reduce vehicle miles traveled, to rely on innovation and sustainable, sustainable transportation modes. Yes, that is all within our climate action plan.
Thank you. And I believe one of my colleagues asked a similar question, but how will the real-time MDS and geofencing give us the ability to enforce safety and ADA access in a way that we didn't have available when the pilot initially came out?
So, right now, once we onboard to a permanent program, the MDS data provides a spatial, rec, spatial mapping of each device and where it is in the city at any given time. So, it could be real time, it could be in the past, dating back to every single day that the operators send us data. So, if they're not allowed in a certain area, such as Fountain Avenue, which is the current policy under the pilot program, we would be able to see when the devices were located on Fountain, how many, the duration, and that sort of thing, and we would be able to penalize the operators accordingly. Right now, we do not have a reliable source to enforce any type of no-operation zone or for the safety based on, like, mapping.
Thank you. I mean, I wouldn't even run on Fountain myself, so that says a lot. And what are the technology improvements? You kind of glossed over it. Like, what, what are some of the technology improvements that we're seeing today that we're not with the pilot in terms of safety?
In terms of safety, I would say, so, something that we implemented in the pilot, or in the permanent program is maximum speed cap of six miles per hour on the sidewalk. We are able to, I don't know if this answers the safety question, but the operators are sending us data on the purpose of the trips, so we are able to monitor whether or not they're idle, if they're in delivery, if they're waiting for, for food to be, you know, put in their bins. So, those are all the different safety items. And like I said in the report, all the geofencing capabilities. So, we are able to say that they're not allowed to be parked in this area, or they're not allowed to be deployed in this area, and then it's penalized if there is, if there is data that shows that they're violating those, those violations.
And then sidewalk mapping is one of the technological advances, right, for the, for this second phase?
Yes, that is incorporated in the operating agreement, where each device is, in order for them to operate autonomously or semi-autonomously, they do have cameras and spatial recognition, so they are able to digest, ingest data, and if the city would like to receive that data, we could request it, and then we would make informed decisions on how to prioritize improvements to our public right-of-way based on that data.
So, if Gilbert, who delivered my Irv's Burgers the other day, if Gilbert since is bringing me food, and it's warm when it gets to me, and Gilbert notices a cracked sidewalk, or a sidewalk that is in need of repair, then basically, the city will have that information from Serve.
Correct, yeah.
So, it's kind of doing us, you know, a service, so to speak, in addition to. Perfect. And, yeah, you know, I, I'm also wondering why the fleet was reduced? You know, you sort of answered it, but there's just really no, as my colleague mentioned, no metric. So, that's just, you know, you don't have to answer that, but I don't understand why the fleet was reduced. And you mentioned service-level agreements earlier, in terms of, because you mentioned a time when if a robot goes down, if Gilbert goes down, so to speak, and then somebody from Serve has to go get Gil, go rescue Gilbert, right? So, he doesn't hurt anybody else, or, you know, make sure he gets the food delivered to the person on time. What is the service-level agreement with the City of L.A. versus West Hollywood, since they're kind of servicing both?
The City of L.A.'s service level of service, they have to respond within two hours. For the West Hollywood, we give them up to an hour.
Up to an hour, okay, understood. Okay, understood. Okay, that is all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I was going to ask about the responsiveness. So it's up to an hour in the contract before they would be penalized? And then how many penalties would they rack up before we would consider, you mentioned suspension of the service?
In the contract, it says no more than $20,000. So we do give it a cap of a financial cap. But that said, the agreement can be terminated at any time if the city feels like they're over, you know, for any reason.
And an hour. And something Vice Mayor Heilman raised, the idea of a flag, would that be part of within an hour's scope? Are we talking more severe incidents if they're falling off the sidewalk, blocking, you know, those sort of things?
It's for anything.
For any of the, any response to it.
Correct.
I know those flags are getting lifted because people like them as their own little totems and prizes that they're running around with in the streets. So I'm sure they're looking into ways to make them more tightened to the robots, but it is definitely sort of a grab item, yes. But I'm glad to know that any of those sort of issues would be responded to within the hour timeframe. That makes sense to me. I also am concerned about the way that we're looking at the advertisement revenue through the lens of the billboards. I do hear loudly that these machines operate at a higher level of, they're getting beat up, they're moving through our sidewalks differently than the billboards sort of exist and their static posts changing the images constantly. So I'm concerned about the way that we've just sort of lumped them into the same advertising formula. And I can appreciate that you've negotiated down, but that is a concern around the operating costs. And as I hear it from the Cocoa side of operators, that they've been able to balance the extreme costs of managing these systems, especially as they're sort of new and rugged and ever-evolving technologies with that advertising revenue. So I want to make sure that we've gotten into a sweet spot. And I really appreciate Councilmember Meister asking an important question of whether we're getting the best deal for our city out of this in the long run. Ultimately, we're employing a service that is meant to work and serve our community members that is in itself a service to the city. And I think the fact that we have created a revenue-share model that will allow us to create necessary improvements and upgrades to our street's landscape is really important. Just want to make sure we're sort of hitting the nail on the head. I don't have any more questions. And I know councilmembers discussed having some comments to provide as well. So Councilmember Erickson put his hand back up for that, and then we'll go back around. Oh, oh, great, even better. Well, let's pause then and go to Yola in the Zoom, and then we'll come back to council deliberation. Great.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
That's great. Good evening, councilmembers, Yola Dorey, West Hollywood. We all know Route 66, but today, this evening, 66 is an even more important number. This is the width our sidewalks need to be to be accessible in order for a person with disabilities and a robot to walk on the same sidewalk simultaneously. It must be 66 inches. So to say that only two sidewalks do not qualify is absurd. Many sidewalks on the east side, like North Vista, do not meet the necessary criteria for accessibility. More research needs to be done before going forward. After all, disabled persons deserve their equal 66 access on neighborhood sidewalks throughout our WeHo. The ADA supports this, and I sincerely hope you will too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Yola. Glad you made it.
Jen, have you spoke already?
Yeah. We'll go to Councilmember Erickson.
My question also, and I forgot to ask this before, so apologies. If the revenue share, if the revenue model agreement that we were to create, there is a potential risk of losing all revenue because the companies just simply couldn't make it work, correct? As one of the commenters talked about?
Yes, that could be. At this point, both operators have stated that they are going to opt in the program. So that would be a minimum of, let's say, $7,500 for the program fee annually. But they might opt out of advertising.
But they could just skip to not work in West Hollywood if it doesn't work out? I mean, they can opt in, but if they're not making any money and they choose to do advertising, they could just essentially say they're going to service West Hollywood, but not really, I guess?
Yeah, I guess they could do that, yeah.
And how many users ballparked? Or, I mean, and if Kelly or Carl are still, and they want to ask this, like Kelly, like, how many, sorry. Do you know how many people? Like, so when we did the scooter program, right, they said within, I can, I can ask you this page because you know this part. It was somewhere near 200-plus thousand rides in like 16 months or something of the program or something like that. Do you remember the figures off the top of your head?
Oh, I think it was over 700,000.
Okay, so never mind. Thank you, that's why Paige is, see, you're good on quick math. There you go. Can you say roughly, like, within a year, you serviced X amount of thousands of WeHo residents? Or do you know a figure off the top of your head?
I don't know the figure off the top of my head, but I believe the staff report combined has stated by June, 34,000 deliveries completed by both operators. I would anticipate that that would likely have doubled by now. So looking at...
The population of the city of West Hollywood?
That's correct.
Thank you so much. That answers. So if people, if we were to completely, if, you know, sadly, because it's a business model, and if we make something so unattractive, yes, they want to opt in, but if they were opted out, we have the potential to anger 34,000 users of a program that use the program. Great. Would love to see those complaints. So that's, those are just my comment and a question, but I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll actually hand it to Vice Mayor Heilman.
I think there is support for continuing this program, maybe not unanimous support, but I'm certainly supportive of the things that I've heard raised, the issue of the flags, and I didn't hear anyone saying that wasn't a problem, that they all need to have the flags on them so that they're visible. The second issue that I've heard is the issue of accessibility. And I think we're all committed to having a program that maximizes accessibility for everyone on the sidewalks. The third issue I've heard is the number of robots in the fleet and whether 30 is the right number or some other number is the correct number. So maybe we can focus our discussion on that. And then the other issue I've heard is the advertising split, whether it's the $4 proposed by the companies or the $6 that is proposed or recommended by staff. So maybe that's what we can do if there is agreement to move forward. And again, I think there is, at least among a majority of the council. On those two issues, I'm actually comfortable with the number of the robots in the fleet. It seems like that was based on the usage that, and that there was a justification for it. I would be open to increasing that after a year after we see how this looks. And on terms, in terms of the advertising, I do understand the issue that these are not billboards, that they get beaten up, and there's a lot more maintenance. I would, I hate to be negotiating at the dais, but if we were to settle on $5, I think that's a fair compromise based on what the companies have said. So that's where I'm at with this, and I'd like to hear my colleagues' comments. If there's an agreement, I'll go ahead and make a motion, but let's hear from others.
Terrific. Thank you. I'll go back to Councilmember Hain.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am in favor of this item. I actually don't want the fleet to be reduced. I want the fleet to go back to the number that it was. And I'm in favor of this because it turns innovation that we have here in WeHo into an ADA funding source for our sidewalk. And that's kind of a rare policy alignment. It reduces car trips and emissions, which aligns with our climate action goals. And it actually protects small businesses by keeping their doors open when you have Gilbert delivering food from restaurants to people in our city. So I think that is very helpful. And I want to comment on what the representative from Cocoa had mentioned earlier. I think, I believe that the advertising revenue is important because, as he said, it keeps the cost down for the delivery fees that aren't passed on to the restaurant, which have to pay a higher fee, or even on to the consumer. So I think it's important that we thread that delicate balance. So I'm actually in favor of $4 as opposed to 6, because if they're not going to be advertising, then the cost is going to be borne by the restaurant, which has to pay a fee, and more than likely the consumer, who's going to get the food delivered to them by Gilbert or his sister Irene. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you very much. I support making this item, this pilot program, permanent. I actually am supportive of increasing the fleet. I was trying to write down what you were saying, Vice Mayor Heilman, regarding the scheduling of the number of usage, number of devices. Can you restate what you were stating there?
I was comfortable with staff's recommendation, but it sounds like you would like to go back to where they were previously.
Yes. So my, I would like, I didn't really see a justification for lowering it, especially based off of the extremely low complaint process. Even if you were getting two to three times more complaints, it still wouldn't even, I mean, match the actual complaints that we're getting for other issues in the city on a daily basis. So I just don't see that panning out, and I feel like that's more of a penalty in any way, shape, and form. I agree with the $4. I don't want to, essentially, they wouldn't advertise from what it sounds like. And so as a result of not advertising, there's a risk of them just not even servicing the city. And then we would have a lot more complaints about angry residents. And I don't want to reinvent a problem for a search of a solution, and I want to be a business-friendly city in that way. And I think that we've seen a huge success in this program, and I think the continued success and the results are really what's here. So that's kind of where I am at, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Meister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not supportive of the item, but I'm not really supportive of the robots because of the accessibility issues, supervision issues. And I also don't think that the city is getting enough of a fee for allowing them to operate in the city, especially if we have to be, you know, figuring out, well, this one's down and having to call and complain that they're in the middle of the street or wherever they are. And also, you know, we don't, it isn't stopping other types of delivery services. There's still Uber Eats, there's still DoorDash. Sometimes you don't even know which one you're getting when you order. Sometimes you get, you know, a car. Sometimes you get a motorcycle. Sometimes you get a bicycle, and sometimes you get a robot. So I don't see where this is really preventing or, you know, slowing down the use of other types of delivery services that actually, you know, have more of an impact in terms of traffic. And I think that, you know, we have to weigh things. And while we may be, you know, saving some trips on the street, we, you know, may be affecting walkability in the city. And the city is known to be one of the most walkable cities in the country. So I'm not supportive of the item, but I know that my colleagues are.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Heilman.
Back to me. Okay. I would just respond, I do think each delivery with a robot is a delivery that's not with a car. I do, I do have the same concerns about accessibility, but I will tell you that I'm sometimes on the street and my vision isn't great. And if there's somebody else on the street, not a robot, but a person, I have to step to the side or they have to step to the side. I don't see how it's any different when you're on a sidewalk that's narrow when there's a robot. I'm prepared to go ahead and move the staff recommendation with two changes, and that is that we return to the fleet numbers that currently exist and that the advertising amount is the $4 proposed by the companies. So I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I will support that motion. I'm really thrilled to hear, after so much time with this pilot, that businesses have found a benefit in this program, that they're utilized by both local businesses, businesses with footprints in other cities, that they found that this is really valuable, that the vast majority or the average of the trips are at that .6 miles. It's absurd to think that anybody would get in a car, drive to a restaurant just to drive a meal, .6 miles in this city. And so every time a robot makes that trip instead, that is one less car doing its work in our city, and that makes me really happy as well. And it meant a lot to hear from community members who've enjoyed this service themselves. I know there's always sort of the fears. The first time my mom thought of this was like, what about the drinks going sideways? And those incidents do happen, but I also have learned that the company, the robot companies themselves serve in Cocoa, but also the local businesses want this to be a really positive experience and that there's been a really great learning journey that a lot of the local businesses have gone through in how to package and prepare, that the robots themselves have been tremendously responsive, not just to sort of those personal crises when deliveries are off, which happens no matter who's delivering it. But the worst of situations that we see on social media and those sort of incidents too, that they all feel really well responded to, has been really appreciated. And I think the concerns around ADA access in our community will persist regardless of whether the robots are here or not. But what I do know is that when people see the little robots pass them on the sidewalk, there's a smile, there's photos, there's something really special about what they bring to the West Hollywood environment too. And so I just want to give big kudos. I'm excited for the way that the advertisements will also bring this different sort of life and experience to that work in the city. So looking forward to seeing those ahead. And I think we're concluded with this item. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for your motion. I think you have the support for a second. We'll go to a vote.
The motion passes four to one, noting the no vote of Councilmember Meister.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out to speak on this item as well tonight. We'll go to item F2. All right, we're good, no break needed. Okay, we'll go to item F2, authorized letters of support and a future loan of commitment for the development of affordable housing at 1049 Fairfax Avenue. I believe there are just a few comments. We'll go straight there, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, and I don't think we need a staff report. I am supportive of this. I just want to make sure that we really advocate for the service of West Hollywood residents. And I know that that is your goal as well. But if we're going to make these kind of loan commitments to that project, there's got to be a way for us to negotiate with LAUSD to ensure that West Hollywood residents get some kind of priority, at least for some of those units. So that's what I wanted to emphasize, and I hope that, these are just preliminary letters of support. There's no actual loan commitment or anything at this time, but I do want to make that point publicly that if one of these projects get approved by LAUSD, that we will be negotiating for our residents as part of this.
Absolutely. That's the intent of staff as well.
With that comment, I will move the item.
Well, we have Councilmember Meister's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't...
That's all right. That's okay, that's what I'm here for.
I just wondered if we had any influence over who, what, because you have several different...
Yeah, so we have, so just Allison Bardell, project development administrator, joined by Steve Campbell. So this is LAUSD's site. It's their RFP. We are not a co-participant. We are simply being notified as, you know, the jurisdiction in which the units, the development is going to occur. And we're offering potentially a loan commitment to cross-subsidize a future development. And so LAUSD has their own timeline, and the Board of Education will select the winners. And I think they're going to announce likely in Q2 of 2026. And we don't, we don't have a say, apart from our letters of support. So, you know, we're, these four organizations, we're providing that letter. They obviously are going to be... we're providing that letter. They obviously are going to be able to show in their pro forma a $15 million potential commitment. And so, you know, that makes them more competitive by showing these, you know, commitments at this point in time. So it's really to help these four applicants. You know, they approach the city. We know them. We know they do good work. But we don't have any sway in terms of what LAUSD decides.
Once one of them is chosen, and if we do move forward with a loan commitment, can we make sure that we have something in the contract like we've done in the past where we have some say in terms of the design?
Yeah, our intent is to, you know, as much as we can, use our standard loan commitment terms, and that would come back with the future item, including the design and all the other items that we've worked hard on over the last several years.
Yep. And of course, as Vice Mayor said, if there is a way that we are able to somehow have some of our own, you know, West Hollywood residents able to apply some kind of program, a priority program or whatever, that would be, of course, desirable.
Absolutely.
Now you're allowed to motion.
Yes. With those comments, I'll move to approve the recommendation.
This is so exciting to hear LAUSD looking to build housing on their property in our city. Thank you so much. Okay. We'll move on to item F3, the Business Retention Program for Restaurants. And I'll pass this over to Councilmember Hang to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, colleagues, tonight, I am bringing forward an item that speaks to the heart of who we are as a city. Our restaurants are not just businesses. They are a reflection of West Hollywood's identity. They are places where people discover community and where memories are made. We have roughly 250 restaurants here in our city. They employ thousands of workers and generate about $5 million in sales tax revenue for the city every year. These restaurants help fuel our local economy, and they shape our culture and our sense of place. But we have all seen what this industry has been up against: rising commercial rents and insurance, post-pandemic recovery, wildfire impacts on tourism and supply chains. We are seeing businesses that are pillars of their neighborhoods trying to survive these pressures. And we are also seeing closures. We cannot ignore that. The goal of this item is simple, and it is urgent. Let us take action now so we are not standing here in a year regretting that we did not move sooner. I'm asking staff to meet directly with restaurateurs, gather feedback, and come back within 90 days with a targeted incentive and retention program that we can implement quickly. This is about smart and data-driven planning, and it is about listening to the people who make up this industry, the experts. We're focusing on independent restaurants and dining venues that are not attached to hotels for a reason. They need our support the most. And this is about protecting one of our most treasured parts of West Hollywood. Our dining culture is part of our creative spirit and part of our reputation as an international destination. We are known for our restaurants and for our sense of community that they create for, for our city. And I want to make sure that continues. I hope you will join me in supporting this item so we can quickly and intentionally keep these businesses open, keep people employed, and keep our city's creative economy thriving. Because I, for one, am tired of seeing restaurant closures. Thank you, Mayor. And I'll hand it over to the Vice Mayor.
I, too, want to echo what Councilmember Hang said. We are seeing a number of restaurants who are facing extraordinary challenges during this economy. Some of them had difficulties coming out of COVID, and we've seen a surprising number of restaurants closing. This is an item that is designed to provide incentives for a key industry in our community, to help that industry. And frankly, without our hotels, a lot of the vibrancy of our city is lost. Part of the reason people come to West Hollywood to enjoy our nightlife and to enjoy our venues is because we have so many excellent restaurants here. I think if we don't act, we are going to see more restaurant closures, and this is something that we need to address, using all the tools at our disposal.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for bringing this item forward. Councilmember Meister, I'll turn it to you for questions or comments.
Thank you. So one of the reasons that I didn't want this to go to consent is that my concern is that, once again, we're adding another item to staff's work plan, and they're basically saying in the staff analysis that this is going to shift other priorities. And we just had the big priority discussion, the last meeting. I think the intention of this is, is great, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing something for the businesses. But my concern is that we are doing, you know, we have the left hand here, the right hand there. We're doing all these different things, and, and some of them are probably the same. Like, there is probably duplication of efforts. And we've asked, you know, we, there are items that staff were given, you know, two years ago that they haven't gotten to yet, which, which were priority. So I have a concern with putting the rush on this without really looking at what staff is doing. To me, this, this is something staff is working on anyway. I mean, because we are basically have said, we need to, we need to help our small businesses. Most of our small businesses are restaurants. I believe that the task force had restaurant owners on the task force, so they've been part of that whole conversation. What I would suggest is that we're going to have a new city manager. That city manager needs to sit down with the director of the Economic Development Department and the managers to see exactly, you know, what, what they're working on, how this fits in, and is it, is it, you know, how do we prioritize? I think to expect someone to come back in 90 days on this when there are all these other priorities, I'm just, I'm just concerned about that. And I, and it's not that I don't think that restaurants aren't a priority. However, you know, there are other, there are other reasons that restaurants aren't doing well, and, and that could possibly be because streets are not as activated, pedestrian-activated, because we have vacancies on our commercial corridors. And if we're focused on filling those vacancies, maybe that would help with business to those restaurants. So I think there, you know, there's more going on here than just the challenges that those restaurants are having specifically. And that's one of the reasons we did an economic development study. That's one of the reasons that we talked about priorities several weeks ago. That's, you know, one of the reasons that they have, you know, I don't know how many, 36 approved initiatives in their work plan. And I just think that we need to have our new city manager and our director of Economic Development really sit down and talk about, you know, how, how, how this all fits in. Not to say it shouldn't be a priority, but to really just see what parts of this are already being worked on, and, and, and be a little more holistic about how we look at this.
Councilmember Erickson?
I don't really have much to add. How I'm looking at this is, I want to make sure the businesses are getting a full scope of an approach from our soon-to-be city manager. But also, how I'm also looking at it is, with everything that's been going on, I'm just assuming that this goes to our staff. Our staff looks at everything that they have to do, and pieces that are duplicative would not be done, and things that are new, which there are a few things in here, are added to it. I hear the timeline conversation, so I'm interested to talk about that, because I don't want to place deadlines for failure, although our staff never fails. They do a great job. But I want to make sure that we're doing this kindly. And I think that this item, frankly, just helps add to whatever they're already looking at, and maybe it's a report back to the council in an email from our city manager or whatever. So I'm generally supportive of it, because I just assume that staff is going to take away duplicative items. I can't go through and just look at everything off the top of my head about what they've already done or not done. And that's just where I'm currently at.
Councilmember Hang, I saw you put your hand up. Did you want to respond?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate all of my colleagues' concerns, and that doesn't weigh lightly on me. I appreciate it. I guess I'm coming from this, I'm seeing this more of, like, a direct injection into an industry that needs help, right? So, I mean, just on Sunset alone, the classic cat closed, the Body Shop, Justin Queso, Cabo, Cabo, Lava, Bootsy Bellows, Pendry's Coffee Shop, Asperal, The Brightly, you know, a lot of businesses. And that's also, you know, not including Chin Chin and my family's favorite restaurant, Le Petit Four, which closed earlier this year. So I appreciate Councilmember Erickson's comments in terms of, if, if things are duplicative, staff won't, will, you know, will look over that and focus on what, what is needed for the item. But I, I'm coming from the perspective of, you know, we have to give this struggling industry assistance. Otherwise, we're going to see more restaurant closures, and that cuts into the heart of our culture, because people come here for restaurants. And, you know, within 90 days, who knows how many more restaurants are going to close. And if we could assist to sort of stop the bleeding, I think it's, at least for me, what we're here for as councilmembers, to assist our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you. I just want to respond quickly. I think that's important, but a lot of those businesses that close, close for reasons that I think Councilmember Meister talked about, that were outside of kind of the scope of what was being done here. The Pendry changed owners, so the coffee shop closed. Le Petit Four got priced out because of their landlord. Chin Chin just moved out of town, much to my dismay, by the way. I love Chin Chin. Makes me a basic white boy, but, you know, there you go. I think, and so, you know, a lot of these restaurants and businesses were in that weird space, but I get where your intent is going. I just don't want people to think that that was it, so.
Councilmember Meister, did you have other comments? Your name popped back up here. Maybe you didn't.
I mean, I guess I would maybe ask our soon-to-be city manager, you know, her thoughts on, on this.
Well, I, sorry about that. I do understand, you know, the, your direction to meet with the Economic Development Director and look at the existing priorities and what's, you know, on the approved work plan. And, I mean, I think that we can prioritize this and come back with some recommendations, but I would want to speak with the staff to see, you know, within the priorities that are already on their plate, you know, how quickly can we do some outreach and get some facts that we can come back with, and then take it from there in terms of bringing back some recommendations and suggestions to us to, because, you know, we, once we do outreach, we may find out that there are other things that may, they may need from the city. And, and I think that, at least with the outreach, we will be able to narrow down, you know, what would be the most effective way to help them. And, and I think we can come back within that timeframe.
Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yeah, and I, I understand the concerns about the priorities in the Economic Development Division and the concerns that Councilmember Meister expressed. Maybe the appropriate thing is to ask you to come back in 90 days. It may not be full recommendations yet, but I do think the idea is that this is an urgent issue, and we want it, treat it with some degree of urgency so that we don't continue to lose restaurant businesses if there are things that we can do. Of course, there are some restaurants that are going to go out of business because they're poorly run, or there's, you know, there's a, a unique issue with the, the owners or operators. But when we have well-established restaurants that are bringing in millions of dollars and are telling us they can't make it with the current economic client, climate, that's something where we need to be looking at, how can we assist them? And that, for me, is the intent of this item.
Yeah, I understand. Can I, and, and we're hearing from businesses that way. Businesses are coming to you as a council member and saying that, because it doesn't, I mean, I'm just thinking back to other moments we've had on this council where we've been in this sort of business, you know, economic state of emergency, and this sort of idea of injecting some resource into the community. We've been kicking around these concepts for some time. I think it's part of what got our economics study together. It's part of what, you know, really empowered the Economic Development Division with this tremendous workload that they've been firing of cross-priorities. So to me, it's just, it's sort of strange that all of a sudden we're in another economic emergency state that hasn't, nobody from any, the chamber, you know, we're not even hearing from people on this item in that way. So that's sort of, I'm just sort of confused about where this is coming from, to all of a sudden sidestep the investment in priorities we've made at the Economic Development Division, which is meant to be helping these businesses get back on track. They're in regular conversation. So that's sort of where I'm like, what, we're, we're in this moment again. That's great. I didn't know. And I, staff's busy doing their work, and so when I read an analysis that is multiple pages long about how this is going to sideline so many of their current priorities and take those things off track, I, I don't know what it means to help the business community. And it, I don't know what an injection of resources mean, and I don't know that encouraging us to sideline what is committed, dedicated, clear work with priorities and goals in support of some idea is the right move right now. And I got a text that said we do have Genevieve on to speak on this. So do we want to pause and go to her? Should we do that? Okay, great.
Go ahead, Genevieve.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor Heilman, and councilmembers. Genevieve Morley, West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Councilmember Hang and Heilman, for bringing this over. And I just want to reiterate, we have not gotten out of this critical state of business. It hasn't been all of a sudden cushy-dory, all of a sudden businesses are thriving. This hasn't changed. None of this has changed. The urgency is there, as Heilman said. And I think duplicity or not, double down, double down. The hospitality industry is suffering throughout the country right now, and we're seeing it twofold, tenfold on, in all of our districts. So this idea that we haven't, that we're in some sort of cushy state of business now, and we haven't gotten out of this critical state of business, is ridiculous. So to hear anyone even talk about why we shouldn't do this, or do it for holistic approach, to me, is ridiculous. I'm sorry, but this just makes me crazy to think that we would sit here and not talk about this item that has been brought forward to look at what we can do to help the hospitality industry that across the nation is struggling right now, across the nation. This community is 26% hospitality in their workforce, hotels, restaurants, nightclubs, and bars. And we are in that critical state of business. We haven't gotten out of it. We haven't all of a sudden become flush and people are thriving. I have a well-known restaurant that I cannot name that is going to be net zero in a year. That means there's no profit at all, and this is a well-known restaurant. And that's because labor is now at 40%, which is unsustainable for any full-service restaurant. And it's not just us. It is across the nation. If you look at Bobby Flay in terms of interviews he's done, or things happening in New York, across the country, these are happening in all our cities with the restaurant industry. And to, to dismiss any type of, of movement in your regard to investigate this from staff is ludicrous not to do.
Thank you, Genevieve.
Tax rebates, don't do that much.
Thank you, Genevieve. Your time is up. Thank you.
Please. If I can respond. First of all, we're not dismissing it. We're saying that this has been a problem that we've been talking about for, you know, the last few years, and that's why we have X number of items and initiatives that the Economic Development Department is working on. So I'm not saying we dismiss it, and I'm not trying to dismiss the issue. The issue has been there, and some of it is, is self-imposed by our own city policies. And so you, again, I say that you have to take a holistic approach to know. You don't just hand someone, you know, $10 and say, okay, this is going to fix, you know, their unhoused situation. I mean, you have to look at the whole picture. I mean, you have to look at the whole picture. So, again, I go back to, I think we go, we have our new city manager and our Economic Development Department come back to us with a sense of what should be priority, what not, what is the actual environment now? Is it, is it just the restaurants or is it all of our small businesses? I mean, and again, we've put forward these initiatives. We know that restaurants and our bars are a good, you know, portion of our small businesses. But we can't just, you know, we can't, we can't omit the others because everything has, they all have relationships to each other.
Yeah, I appreciate your response, Councilmember Meister. I also am not trying to dismiss any concerns. I'm just looking at one of the pages of the staff report and the redundancy that's outlined here because of previous council direction. The first item on the list is develop target business attraction and retention strategies. And then with this item, it would be additional business retention programs but specific to restaurants, entertainment venues. So, that's sort of back to my concern is that we're creating redundancy, which I think muddles what direction we're actually trying to give to staff. And they could be in the process of creating some of those strategies and coming back to deliver, but now we'll have to sidestep that to focus in on this more narrow, specific scope. So, it sounds like there was enough support to see this move forward tonight, but I don't... Sure, and then I think Councilmember Hang wanted to jump back into it.
Do you mind? What I'm hearing is that there is unanimous support for us to make sure we're continuing to help our businesses. Yay. What I would like to see potentially, and maybe this is an alternative to what we have in front of us, is because we're hearing the words duplicative a lot and what's going on in terms of our priorities, could we ask staff to come back? Could, if this is approved, or could staff come back to show us everything that they've been doing? They have, but then if this is prioritized in, where this fits in the motion? Because I'm hearing all the different things about where certain things are in this concept, but we're all saying, well, this needs to be done, and this needs to be done, and this needs to be done. I would rather have staff come back, trust the experts, give us the full range of priorities included with this, and let us know what's tier one, what's tier two, what's tier three, right? So, that way, if we have someone saying, you know, tax incentives, what does that look like, right? You know, and fitting into the actual scheme of things. So, I think I would feel more comfortable having that information come back in a holistic report, including with this, so we can all see everything that's broken down, so it's not duplicative, and we can have a full, robust list.
If I can add something before Councilmember Hang? Just as you said, the staff ranking, number one, the project name, develop targeted business attraction and retention strategies for new and existing businesses, including addressing vacancies. Why don't we have them come back with that and find out what part of that has been focused on our hospitality businesses?
And I was going to ask Jackie if you knew the schedule of presentations that the different departments were giving and if and when Economic Development would be prepared to do a presentation?
Yes, Economic Development is scheduled to come in January.
In January. Great timing. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, it sounds like our number one priority is to retain and attract businesses, and this is one of the programs that should be part of that number one priority. How do we retain a group of businesses that are key for our city? And I do want to comment on what Genevieve said. This is a problem. It's a nationwide problem. Food costs have increased. All of us as consumers know that. It has impacted restaurants. There's also other changes in how people are going out or not going out. Or I've heard from several restaurants that people are not drinking as much, they're using edibles before they go to restaurants, or they're drinking at home and then going to the restaurant. So, it's impacted the bottom line of a lot of restaurants. Even though they appear to be successful, they're just not making enough money to pay the rents and to pay the salaries that they're used to. So, I'm comfortable with this being a, something that is brought back to us in the context of that number one priority that's on the Economic Development Division's list.
Thank you, Councilmember Hang.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as the city manager select had indicated earlier, yeah, we won't know what is necessary until staff does outreach. So, that will give us sort of a litmus test of what businesses need. And, you know, I'm in agreement with the Vice Mayor that this is a priority. Because it's not only just, you know, vacant storefronts and restaurants that are closing, I'm thinking of the hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs that are impacted. People who work in this city, they get paid a very comfortable, you know, a very high living minimum wage here. So, I'm looking at it affecting the workers in this city. So, we have to do all we can and flex any levers that we have as a council to inject assistance and help where needed. And we're not going to be able to do that unless we do an outreach to the restaurant community to see what it is that they specifically want and or need. Thank you.
I think we're still saying two different things. The, there's one pathway, I think that would be about having Economic Development staff return under the existing work priority and giving us an update on where things stand. As part of that, hearing that retention of the restaurants, full-service dining is a critical part of that. I think there's a second pathway that includes a new realm of outreach to those businesses, and that's a piece of work I don't think I'm interested in seeing staff do, given how much ongoing, existing outreach is already happening, how much dialogue is already occurring. If staff is able to bring back a set of updates and recommendations, that could be helpful without the outreach, I'd be supportive. But it's the outreach that comes as part of a brand-new council item tonight within a 90-day timeline that is where my concerns rest, that we're, again, sidestepping a huge plate of priorities, which are, again, muddled with some of these existing priorities. So, that would be my preferred route, not doing the outreach until we hear from staff what their updates are, where things are currently at, and then seeing if that realm of outreach would be necessary.
And my understanding is they're doing it.
They're doing it, that's why, yeah.
That's, at least that's what I, you know, what we're told. So, maybe when the report, when they come back in January, we get an update on the outreach as well.
Can I suggest that maybe we ask this to be brought back to us in January with some discussion of how it fits in with the current work plan and how outreach would need to occur if it hasn't already occurred?
Yes, we will include that in that update for January.
Thank you.
But shouldn't we still move on this motion?
Well, I think the intention, at least from my standpoint, is that staff would bring that back at a meeting in January with a, with the intention of this program moving forward.
So, are you making a motion to... Okay, sorry. I figured, okay.
Can you repeat your motion?
So, the motion is that this be brought back to us in January with a discussion of how this fits in with the existing Economic Development work plan. We would get an update on outreach that has already been done to the restaurant community, and staff would also identify if additional outreach is necessary. And that staff would come back to us with some preliminary recommendations on how to move forward with this initiative. Not necessarily 90 days, but they would tell us what they believe still needs to be done to implement this kind of initiative.
Great. Well, we moved item four, F4, to consent, so we're on item F5. Evaluate establishing a film permit administrative fee waiver pilot program. Councilmember Erickson, I'll turn it to you to introduce.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is an item that I'm proud to have worked on with Mayor Byers regarding some of the work that we're doing. We're seeing cities across California work to improve the conditions for filming throughout their districts. And this is something that I took upon myself, and I know the mayor and I have been talking about different ways in which we could help. So, this is looking at the film permitting that the city controls specifically. It doesn't touch anything about fire, but we've seen the county wanting to start these types of programs as well. Theirs can go a little bit further. Culver City has taken additional initiatives to do what we can. This is a pilot program, and this really came to me as a result of seeing the amount of film permits go down significantly and the continued push for whatever dollars we can do to give back. And, you know, these smaller, medium, and larger-sized filmings that we're seeing here in West Hollywood are kind of the bread and butter of the filmmaking, television, YouTube, all the platforms that people want to help. And anything that local cities can do to help in this process is something that we should do, because the more that we don't do, the more we'll see studios move out or continue to move out. And the tax incentive programs that we're seeing are not enough and don't go far enough. So, that's kind of, and this is for fiscal year '27, so this would not, this would be for the next fiscal year.
I'll just add, yeah, I'm glad that this would be looking to the future, creating a timeline where this would exist. We do pretty well as a city when it comes to filming. I think 330 days of the year, some incredible number of days where filming takes place in our city. So, as the region is looking at how these permit fees are barriers, I think it's right that our city, being a film-friendly city, as we reestablished earlier this year, looks to the fee system as part of what may be a barrier. It may not be our challenge as a city, so I'm glad that we're giving staff some time to explore the feasibility of this permit waiver system to start in the year 2027 budget cycle. It gives time for this to be something that the region moves on, which I also know is something that the county's interested. What would it look like to really send a message that the county wide is open for filming, rather than just sort of the city-by-city moment? So, I'm looking forward to telling that story as a region moving forward through this item. I'm also interested to see and watch as other cities explore their fee systems, all of the different sort of structural components that make filming a challenge, and to see what else we can learn as this time moves forward. So, again, I, you know, the fees are the least of the problems, I think, that film industry experiences when it comes to our community. But this is telling a story to the film industry that they can start to look to West Hollywood and consider things differently, and I wanted to make sure that our community hears that message loud and clear. I see that we have a couple of speakers signed up in public comments, so maybe we'll go there and then we'll come back to council for discussion. I see Joshua Baum, and then we'll go to Zoom for our speakers there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joshua Baum, West Hollywood renter, urban economist, union member, and small business owner here in West Hollywood. I want to thank Mayor Byers and Councilmember Erickson for bringing this item forward because the data makes clear how urgent this moment is for our creative workforce and our small businesses. Film LA's new Q3 report shows a 13% regional drop in shoot days year-over-year, with total production now 37% below the five-year average. Television, the backbone of our local industry, fell nearly 21%. These are real impacts on union crews, below-the-line workers, and independent creatives who live in and around West Hollywood and keep our local economy moving. And our own staff report shows that West Hollywood's film permit revenue is already down 20% below the seven-year average, reflecting the broader downturn. Evaluating this administrative fee waiver pilot is a smart, targeted step. It keeps every public safety, street use, and impact fee intact, but it helps us stay competitive at a time when California has expanded its film tax credit and new productions are lining up locations right now. When production returns, workers benefit, creatives benefit, and small businesses benefit. Thank you again to the sponsors for recognizing that West Hollywood can't sit on the sidelines. We have to fight for the jobs and industries that make this city vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our speaker in Zoom, and then we'll read the citizen position slips.
Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor Heilman, and councilmembers. Genevieve Morel, West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. Yes, absolutely correct. This is not a problem that is just ours locally. It's a problem that is throughout the state of California, and the state has been trying to do their part, but it's not enough. So, anything that we can do locally to help is really appreciative, and I appreciate Councilmember Erickson for bringing this forward and Mayor Byers for your comments. We have been a film-friendly city. It's not necessarily what is known out there in the location manager scouting world, but we're trying to make sure that that's known, that we are a film-friendly city. Evaluating this pilot program is smart. It's a targeted step forward to encouraging more filming while complementing new standard and initiative. The chamber appreciates that this proposal focuses specifically on waiving administrative fees while keeping all public property use, safety, notification, and street closure requirements intact. This ensures that we continue supporting production activity without compromising neighborhood quality of life. We understand this is an evaluation, not a commitment, and we support the city gathering the fiscal and operational information needed to determine whether this could be an effective tool for stimulating additional filming and economic activity. For these reasons, the chamber supports moving forward with this feasibility analysis and thanks the city for its continued leadership in sustaining our vibrant creative sector. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have citizen position slips?
Yes, we have one from Cody Christiansen, a West Hollywood resident in support of the recommendation from staff.
Thank you.
And the councilmembers.
We'll go to Councilmember Meister for your comments.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this forward. I think that the city does need to be competitive, especially among its west-side sisters. I, the only thing I, you know, I was a little concerned about staff's concerns, but it sounds like this only applies to the administrative fees and not to any of the other revenue that comes from that. And then the other thing I was going to bring up, and maybe staff can also look at, look at it when they look at, when they look at this, is I've heard that when there are separate streets being filmed, each street needs a permit. And even though it's the same project, so maybe there's something that they can, that's something staff can look at, that maybe there's an overall fee for a project, you know, with multiple streets. And I'm not saying it should be the same price necessarily, but something probably more economical than individual streets.
Thank you. Councilmember Hang?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate my colleagues for bringing this item forward. I really appreciate that this is a targeted approach for a specific industry, so thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Heilman, any comments?
I'm supportive of us looking at this. I do think that the decline in filming has very little to do with our permit fees, but I'm certainly open to exploring that and how we can be as friendly as possible to the industry.
Terrific. Thank you, Councilmember Erickson, for bringing this item forward. Do you want to make the motion?
You're welcome.
Great. All right. With that, we've reached the end of our agenda. We have no items on excluded consent tonight. Do we have anybody signed up for final public comment?
I do not have anyone, and we don't have anyone in Zoom.
All right. We'll go to our councilmember comments and meeting attendance reports. I'll start to my right with Councilmember Hang.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended various events and meetings in the city of West Hollywood. And just to keep this meeting short, Happy West Hollywood Day. I want to thank all the staff that were involved in putting it together. I think the community had a great time. I know I had a great time. And, you know, I want to congratulate our new city manager, Jackie Rocco. And for the month of December, the city of West Hollywood will have a female mayor, a female city attorney, and a female city manager. And I'm so damn proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
I attended lots of meetings and events. Happy World AIDS Day. Thank you to my colleagues and John Heilman. You brought the fire at the event. You brought the fire at the event. It was really nice to hear you throw down. We don't hear it enough. So excited to see how Trump brings out the John Heilman in many ways. But it was wonderful. And I want to also say I look forward to supporting a future agenda item with our soon-to-be new city attorney at our next, city manager, city attorney. We'll do the other one just for kicks and shit and giggles. But, you know, congratulations, Jackie. I'll have more to say next time.
Councilmember Meister?
Thank you. Congratulations, Jackie, and also look forward to, you know, signing the deal. Attended West Hollywood Day. Didn't attend a lot of other things because of the I situation, but we're getting better. Did want to mention the city of West Hollywood is offering a free active shooter preparedness workshop on Saturday, December 6, at 10:00 a.m. at the city of West Hollywood's Council Chamber's Public Meeting Room. And that's located here at 625 North San Vicente Boulevard. Limited validated parking is available at the adjacent West Hollywood Park, five-story parking structure. And the workshop is free. It is a really, it really is a good workshop. In fact, I'm, with my work, I'm doing that tomorrow. So I would recommend it to everyone. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yes, I also attended the Cityhood Party. I got to participate with the Hollywood Food Coalition Thanksgiving event. I attended our World AIDS Day event. And I do really want to remark publicly that it is outrageous that the current administration is not recognizing World AIDS Day. That is just a reflection of so many other disgusting things that they have done and continue to do. I also attended, on a more happy note, the opening of our ice skating rink. And I want to invite everyone out to enjoy that as well. The mayor and I took a few little spins, very gingerly, around the ice rink. But it is a lot of fun, and there's great music. And I hope everyone enjoys it this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Importantly, there's a railing, so you can make it all the way around. Just hold on. The ice rink is wonderful. The holiday market this weekend will also be wonderful. Hope everyone gets a chance to come out and check it out. I got tickets for the Pink Pony Club night also. So I'll see you back there on the ice or close to it. I attended the National League of Cities City Summit event in Salt Lake City. Traveling to these states that are hostile to the LGBTQ community is a reminder to me of the work of this council, investing in communities where these values are not felt. But seeing the city of Salt Lake so alive with pride, queer pride flags, trans flags all over the city, it was truly moving. And to be there over the Trans Day of Remembrance on November 20, seeing the trans flag raised half-mast out in front of the City Hall building of Salt Lake, because they had made the commitment to adopt the trans flag, the Juneteenth flag, and the pride flag as their official city flags. When the Utah Legislature commanded that they, you know, ban all these flags from their city premises, they took the next step and adopted them as formal city flags so they can continue to raise them. It was truly remarkable, and just a reminder of how resilient the LGBTQ community and so many diverse communities are in this moment of time, truly remarkable. Yes, commemorating World AIDS Day tonight. It was so special to be out there at the monument as it's intended to be used. And yeah, to hell with this administration and what they're doing to erase community and erase the day that they had no problem recognizing four years in a row just a few years ago also. I want to just thank everybody for what was a really special WeHo Cityhood Celebration Day. We also had a moment to recognize our outgoing city manager, David Wilson, with the Key to the City, a much-deserved tribute to his many, many years of service, which we have only begun to formally recognize here. Looking forward to our upcoming meetings at the end of this year. But I hope everyone had a really wonderful, long holiday weekend. And it feels like the holidays are truly upon us. It's December. We'll see you back out there at the ice rink. This meeting is officially adjourned until our next meeting, Monday, December 15, 2025, 6:00 p.m. Back here, we'll see you then. Have a great evening.